All right, it is now six P M. We will begin the work study session for the Adrian City Commission meeting for January second, two thousand and twenty four. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
President.
Commissioner Banky.
President.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Not present.
Commissioner Cassbury.
Present.
Commissioner Gauks.
Present.
All commission members present with the exception of Commissioner.
At this time, I will turn it over to our city administrator, Greg Ollian.
I just doubt that Commissioner Miller has passed along with this out of state, doesn't it?
And he had a plan for quite a while.
Yeah.
He told you and I.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So our first item is the discussion regarding bone pool. A couple of things, Jeremiah is going to update you in terms of where we're at. Terms of being ready to open that was here, as you may recall, with every sheet. This, yeah, there you go, this year.
That were in twenty.
Later this year, we didn't have any heat last year. And we planned to have that problem resolved this year, which Jeremiah explained that then going forward, we went through a request for qualifications process with various consultants, as I think we design consultants, which I believe I reported to you previously in my weekly report, if not at the work session here. And we've selected the collaborative as the one we would like to use to engage in a design process for those sort of à la carte improvements that we've discussed. What pieces of the improvement plan, if you will, that we're going to try to engage in going forward. And so they're going to present to you tonight as well. Both in terms of their qualifications and then what the scope of work would be for the controls. With that, as an introduction, I'll turn it over to Jeremiah and keep getting things rolling.
Hey, Greg, Commissioner, good evening. Stole a little bit of my thunder. Just a quick recap, if you remember over the summer, we were presented with a number of options from a firm. And one of the striking things that came from that was some absorbic costs anywhere from ten to eighteen million. And then on top of that, they also talked about an extreme operating loss every about a half million dollars. So from those meetings, the previous commission, myself, Greg, you all kind of started talking and we kind of agreed that we want to look at a phased approach and kind of start rehabbing the pool, but also through this process, ensuring that we don't lose here. And so the first thing that came from that, as Greg mentioned, we didn't have a boiler. The pump was screaming, spinning water, smoking. The last few weeks, I kept going down there every day with my fingers cross, hoping that I could really be working. It was, so to ensure that we didn't lose the season, the first thing that we had to tackle was the pump in the boiler. And if you remember some of the conversations, that was quite a process because we have to go through the state Eagle to get their approval before we start making changes to public swimming pools. Quite the process, but we started it. And after repeated calls and emails, we finally got hold of somebody and they started coming down and talking this whole process out, we filed the paperwork. And fortunately, about six weeks ago, we finally got the approval from Eagle to move forward with the replacement of those pieces, which he turned, we immediately sent out to bid. The pump and the boiler in accordance with the city's competitive bid process and happy to announce that just this past Thursday, at the end of day, we opened up the bids and we had a ton of interest from a number of vendors from across the area and Michigan into Ohio. But happy to report that our own later mechanical was a little bit. And so at the January sixteenth meeting, I'm going to bring a resolution to you to accept their bid so they can get the pump and the boiler moving forward. So that was kind of phase one, the first thing that we identified that we needed to do in order to not lose a season. So you'll have that resolution on the sixteenth, we'll do that. But then second, as Greg mentioned, through this process, we understand that we needed to bring some folks on that can help us and guide us through this process, the design phase, project management, all those different types of things. And we sent out a request for qualifications. And one of the great things about this group that's here is in previous, I went to two conferences this fall, completely unrelated to bone pool, and their name came up. So I kept hearing the collateral, I heard that. Then we went through the process, received their information and after a couple of days and hours of Greg sitting in his office, laying everything out, reading through materials of all the different companies that reached out that were interested, we did a ton through this whole fall, we had multiple visits from a number of groups from around the state, again, and down into Ohio, who wanted to come on and do this project. We learned a lot, but one of the things that we, I think, stuck out for both myself and Greg was kind of the methodology that they're going to explain and their kind of approach, because they're really kind of lined up with what we had discussed. Is let's get this phased approach, let's ensure that phase one, we get the pool open, but then have, you know, a plan laid out in regards to design and how this is all play out. So through these discussions, Greg and I were both in agreement that we thought the collaborative suited the city's needs best. And so that's why they're here tonight and they're going to kind of go through and explain to you what this process looks like, their qualifications, they're qualified, but they'll kind of fill you in on that. And then feel free throughout to ask any questions. And at the very end, if you'll approve on the next meeting as well, we'll have another resolution to bring them up. So I'm going to reintroduce Ray and let him kind of take it from there.
All right, and so my name is Ray Mickam and I'm the technical principal of the collaborative. Joe Bowen is here with me as our project manager and Randy Gardner is an owner at Mechanical Design Associates. So the facility assessment portion is engineering to assist us with that. We, when we get into the presentation all deeper, we've got other members, the team that draw their resources, you know, it's the process. It's okay, I'll come up. We do have a bit of a slide deck. And I want you to look back and forth, back to board. So we can go to the next slide. Jeremiah already asked us to tell a lot of you know of us, because we work up in Lenawee County and in the city of Adrian, but maybe not all of you are familiar, so we, we were asked to give a short overview of some of our relevant experience. We'll, we'll start with that, you go to the next slide. Next slide, thank you. Yeah, keep going, Joe. So quickly in our office, we just celebrated fifty years in two thousand and twenty three, so that was an exciting milestone for us. We're forty five people, we're probably two thirds in Toledo and a third up in Ann Arbor. So we're, we're kind of close to Adrian from two different directions with our two offices. We've done over seventy eight projects that are sports and recreation related. A lot of BIM projects, which is building information modeling, which is a pretty good way of making sure that you're coordinated with all of your engineering. You have a good set of documents. Next slide. Of our team, Joe and I in color here, in person. Brianna is a really talented interior designer, Rusty Wilkie is a landscape architect. Steve Wilson is a kind of a deep technical resource for us and will help us with issues related to code compliance and regulatory agencies. I introduced Randy, he and his team of M D A engineering will look at mechanical electrical plumbing. We have B and B pools and spas, who was the contractor that built the bone pool, I believe, like all those years ago, so we do work from that, with them up in this area from time to time, so they'll, they'll help lend their expertise. Dean Fredrickson will be our, help us from a civil engineering standpoint. And if we get into structural issues, especially related to the building or, you know, the, the structure of the pool itself, okay, our engineers will help us with that. Next slide. Mentioned that we're kind of local, you know, between Toledo and Ann Arbor, we kind of feel Lenawee County is, is part of our immediate domain. Next slide. Going into experience, thirty nine aquatics projects, a hundred and ninety parks and municipal projects. Thirty way, thirty three projects in Lenawee and Adrian County, or the city of Adrian. Next slide. So the first one that we'll show you is the new YMCA at ProMedica's campus. ProMedica owns this building, the YMCA of Greater Toledo operates it, so we worked with both ProMedica and the Toledo Y in the design, and that's been online for a couple of years, thank you. And some, some pictures of the interior, you could scroll, next slide. And we also did the Francis Family Y, which is in Michigan, but also is part of the YMCA of Greater Toledo, it's in Bedford. Next. And right now, we're working with the YMCA of Greater Toledo on a multi-phase campaign that will involve expansions at Fort Meigs, the Savania facility, the Will Creek facility. And, and we've got an image of the Lenawee County Y here on this, that, this slide as well. We do community recreation and other, you know, like, like this is Ashland, Ohio Salvation Army's CROC. You know, we expanded their recreation facility with a family pool that's got a lazy river and, you know, zero entry and toys and exterior splash pad. So again, we've, we've done a fair amount of these types of recreation. Next slide. And we've done a lot of pools in the higher ed space to Ohio Wesleyan, Ashland, University of Toledo, Kent State, worked on all of their rec centers. Next. And while, and maybe before we move on to project approach, I'll mention, we've really done a lot in Adrian and like with Adrian College since the, gosh, you know, the beginning of my career shipment, library expansion, that goes back twenty five years. And done many, maybe probably most of the significant projects on that campus in the last couple of decades. We did the master plan at Sienna Heights University and did, have done all the major projects on that campus since their sister pegs down here. We're working with Adrian Dominican Sisters right now. So we're, we're up here with Lenawee County, the historic courthouse, renovation sheriff's office. We, we know your building department, we know your, your, your folks really pretty well. We know that the contractors up here, the trade contractors and, and one thing our office does, we try to be really proactive in building strong teams, going to the trades for advice, value engineering input. You know, this new boiler that Adrian Mechanical was putting in. You know, we, we like to confer with the, the local folks about, you know, constructability and economy and value and, you know, we just, we value their input. So I don't know, Joe, do you want to join me? Because Joe was going to kind of leave the discussion of the project approach. We'll try to describe what these planning processes look like and touch on our proposal a bit and answer your questions.
Next slide. So we have on here, it's a two-phase project, kind of elaborating on what Jeremiah said, it's a three-phase project, you've already kicked off with the boiler, so we're just going to focus on our involvement in the project. So the two phases that we're calling now are phase one, which is a building assessment, a pool assessment, a site assessment. So our team, Randy's team, B and B pools, we'll go in there and we'll look at, well, sorry, being out of myself. And the second one would be implementation. Next slide. So phase one, the first part of that would be a facilities conditions assessment. And that's what I was just touching on, that all of our teams would go in, look at the building, look at everything that's in there now, would put together a summary of that, so they, any issues that we see with code compliance, adequacy of the building, any of the support systems, the pool itself. And then we would recommend, this is what we recommend for the pool, for maintenance schedules, anything like that. Once we have that assessment, that's when, as Ray just pointed out, we like to really involve ourselves in the team. That's when we start designing, but that's when we also look to you for your input. What are your goals for the project? How are we phasing this out? What's our timeline? What are your goals for each period or each phase of that project? And then we'll work through with you, with our subs and we'll also help you get onboard a contractor and we'll work with that contractor and their subs on the steps moving forward. And then we'll get into our deliverables. So at the end of this, we'll give you a package that can be put out the bid and that's going to be site plans, building plans, it's going to be narratives, both mechanically, electrical plumbing and pool.
A bit of a clarification, not put out to bid, but a budget development. Is that in, in, in this initial assessment phase? And we'll get bids as part of implementation phases, which probably roll out in a phased approach.
Um, next slide. Sorry. So yes, as Ray just said, this would be where we actually go through and do the documentation and that is where the bidding would occur at the end of this. So that would be broken out into schematic design, design development, instruction documents and construction admin. And through all those, like the previous phase, you guys would be involved in helping us, Ray mentioned, doing V E as part of our design, so we like to have our finger on the pulse and if we, we don't want to overdesign and then have to redesign later if we're overpriced. So we like to get that input as we work. Oh, is that next slide? So right now, we just took a step at a schedule. So we were assuming that we can get this assessment done here this spring. We can start our programming and design and then we can get through the budgeting. Hopefully as early as possible, obviously, we know that this postseason, we don't want any hindrance to that, you guys are going to be open operational. At that same time during that season is when we can start phase two, which is art drawings. So we can talk about phasing, but we can get our drawings done while the pool is open and then hopefully construction can hope it can happen during off season.
These types of processes, I think one of the most important things we want to understand right out of the gate is over what period of time are we looking? This is probably like a ten to fifteen year vision. Try to project out much past that, it gets difficult to. And then what realistically do you think your budget is over that time period? Because if, if you know, we're, we're within this, we want to make sure we understand the constraints. As if like moving to a different site or doing a brand new building, a brand new pool isn't realistic, we don't want to waste a lot of time talking about that. And usually, you know, our clients will express that as ranges. Like, you know, we, we feel conservatively that we can bring this kind of money to the table over a period of years. You know, if things fall our way or depending on some variables, it might stretch to here. So usually we're getting kind of a bracketed range and then we're planning to do the best we can with the monies that you think you have realistically available. We don't like to throw good money after bad. If there are some areas that, you know, you might consider putting money in, but, you know, we think that, you know, the the structure is too far gone or the renovate rebuild ratio is just too far out of whack. We want to catch that and tell you that early and be realistic about that. So, so we do want to create a long vision and think of everything that happens down the road so that each phase of implementation is kind of within that master plan and we're not, you know, doing something silly that we have to undo later. But we, we want to get you to a realistically achievable end goal, you know, within, you know, that, that timeframe that you defined. So that sort of input is really important to us early. How far open you make this process in terms of input is also another thing that you want to give some consideration to. We like to be held, you know, or directed by, you know, a reasonable sized group of people, a steering committee that can make decisions. If you want to go out to the neighborhood, if you want to engage stakeholders or certain voices that you are think are important in the process. Sometimes that includes people that might be willing to donate money to the cause or, you know, tell us who we should be listening to and we will then graph that into the process. Usually we've got a handful of meetings where we're taking that input and we're, we're considering different sorts of options and different sorts of priorities. When we, we get through and we, we have a pretty good handle on what we think the recommended long-term vision is, we will put prices to all that and lay that on a spreadsheet on a schedule and then we'll work with your team to lay that into, you know, okay, this is an immediate initiative. This is a two thousand and twenty six initiative, this is more on the, the long-term plan. We'll try to break those into bundles of investment that are realistic across your time horizon, whatever your cash flow possibilities sound like, so. Any, any questions?
Jeremiah, is the, the goal to maintain the current community standard with the pool? Or are we looking at one of those three options that were presented this summer?
We're looking at the community standard. One of the things that was presented again was the summer was, I don't think realistic to, to really what we wanted to, to do. We wanted to ensure that our, our community, our families, our kids had the opportunity to go to bone pool for multiple times through public comment, former commissioners, myself, the, the history and the attachment that a lot of people in this room and then, you know, in our community have to the pool. So we really wanted to focus on, after those presentations, how do we meet that community standard? That community standard was a, a clean, functioning pool that provided kids and families an opportunity. And we believe that through this approach of taking this phase approach, we can do that. Some of those, that presentation was kind of a pie in the sky. It wasn't realistic. Sure, we'd love to have two different bodies of water and lazy rivers and all this kind of thing. But at a cost that was just going to be absorbed. Again, we're talking fifteen to twenty million dollars on a facility that at best is open seventy days a year, maybe eighty on a good summer. So to answer your question, do we like those pie in the sky ideas? Sure, but it wasn't realistic. And so that's when we really discussed and said, okay, what is that community standard? And that's ensuring that every summer that we have a fun, functioning, safe place for, for residents to go. Really thought that this approach was, was the best.
And we, we established two earlier discussions that this is just going to remain a community pool that I'm trying to impact people regionally. It's going to fulfill that function and then, you know, amongst those things that we saw when we did our survey, where people had expressed a lot of interest in, what can we plug into this facility? We kind of, except like Jeremiah said, we saw proposals where there were two different bodies of water. Well, you know, we have both of those in one right now. It's kind of like conclusion, like, well, we carry on a perfect shape pool for what our community needs are. So what can we add to it? What can we fix that's not up to appropriate standards now? And make it a better pool that's, what it wants to be is just that community pool. So those parameters going in are to maintain bone, not move it and create it somewhere else. Right.
Would you need our budget and timeline information? Not, I assume you said January, February on your P M worksheet there. When would you want that from us? When?
The earliest, the better. I mean, if you, you know, sometimes that's something that, you know, there's, there's some, some exploration, you know, some of our clients will say, well, show us what you can do. And, and that's fine. I, I think it's just understanding what your constraints are, even the answer of, you know, we're not trying to turn this into a, a regional draw. We want to focus on meeting the needs of the community. We want to leverage the assets that we already have in place. We want to stabilize and, and lengthen the life of this facility that served the community for a long time. It's that type of input. And, and we just don't want to come back with a package that is misaligned with what you can realistically do. So the more you can be clear about that, the better.
We have the, we did a survey, correct?
Yes.
And so we have a lot of input from the community already.
Yeah.
So we can bring that back out and utilize that.
Yeah, that was really helpful to read through those reports if you have them.
Is there a budget number you're looking at? Well, it's a little bit of a chicken and a egg thing, right? I mean, like we talked about, we want to restore what we have. And so we kind of got to know what needs work and what the cost of that work is before we get, and then beyond that, then what can we add in on top of that? This is a, this is a fund balance discussion, quite honestly. And so it's a discussion that the commission have, but mission up to this point has been very firm in wanting to maintain that pool as the asset. So, and we've got to have a programmed approach to make sure we fix everything that's wrong, right? The liner needs to be replaced at some point. And when the liner is replaced, the deep end isn't properly configured for diving. You know, we're going to have diving, are we not going to have diving? It doesn't need to be that deep, if we don't, that's the time to do it. What is that going to be? And, you know, and the, you know, notes, I, I, as I envisioned it, things like that will be the early phase items. And what can we add in later? You know, where the kiddie pool used to be, does it want to be another splash pad there? Honestly, between Jeremiah and I talking with the folks, the idea, the idea of a zero beach entry probably isn't going to happen because it would have to happen at the end where there's not enough room to do it. So things like that, as you make the assessment, will become clear. We want to add as many bells and whistles though, to make it a better community pool as we can. Through it, so. You know, is there a budget? Well, what's the fund balance? But, you know, or what's the available fund balance? It's beyond what we feel like we need to hold, but yeah. Kind of got to know what the needs are before we can talk about what the additions would be.
And to kind of piggyback off what Greg was saying. So in keeping that community standard, so we have, we have the, the survey, all that information. And so this whole time, I reread and gone through all these things over the last year. As Greg mentioned, other shoes, for example, the, the beach entry, that was one of the things with a lazy river. Again, that sounds fantastic, that sound, it's that pie in the sky. So we started having discussions with folks and one of the things that that reason that beach entry came about was in our shallow end, it's not the biggest. So families with small children would say on a busy day, they felt like they were sitting on top of each other. So they said, well, again, these were just conversations constantly having like, well, it'd be kind of cool if it was expanded and we kind of had the beach entry. I'm like, I don't disagree, there is a need to kind of address that. However, as we start talking with contractors and folks, they're like, it's not really feasible in the shallow end. They were already, we're butted up right to the building. So essentially what you do is you're tearing up the whole pool and pushing that to the other side, which then the, the, the costs begin to skyrocket. So in discussions and in thinking this out, we're like, how do we address families with small children? Do you remember the success that we're having with the splash pad over Parish Park is insane? And the community loves it, the residents there love it. So we've talked that out and said, well, what about a, a new splash pad maybe on the backside to address families with small children? And they were like, that sounds great, you know. So those are the ideas and so we kind of have a template, a template kind of in place and kind of needs that we, we know that are there that we need to be taken care of. So we're not just walking into this blind and going, oh, I have no idea. We have a very, very good idea what needs to be done. So at this point, you know, we'll be able to tie it in with the assessment. We go with the collaborative that we can kind of pull together. So we have the information ready, readily available to share, we've already been in discussions with them and just kind of talking this out and how this would work. So, you know, we have the needs, we have the wants, but again, what's, what's realistic for it? So we have this stuff ready to go, so we're kind of excited. So we have this stuff ready to go, uh, so we're kind of excited about.
And the expiration of our current bonds are too far away to consider anything?
No, it's, it's not, but. Like I said, we, the discussions up to this point have kind of been for this incremental. Approach that we're accepting the footprint as it is, we're not trying to move it somewhere else, we're not trying to make it something that it's not. Let's see what we can program in year by year, working with the resources that we have without.
And that might be a feature on the timeline as well. I mean, as we try to prioritize and plan projects, you know. The availability of borrowing power, you know, somewhere down the road might. Be a key catalyst for, for a more serious project while we're doing maintenance.
Right, and who knows what the assessments could show.
Right, yeah.
The assessment shows the, you know, guts underneath all need to go, well, you know, that's something we haven't contemplated yet. Just our expectations, basically.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but part of that discussion too was just to keep it as affordable as we can and. So that all residents can enjoy it, correct?
Right, you know, we're not talking about creating a rate structure that pays us back, but we don't make money out of it, I'll lose money.
I think that comes back to our discussion on quality of life and our strategic plan, right? We build the quality of life that it and. Out out pricing our our communities, it's not a good idea. That pool has been such a a strong, stable. Constant attraction for this community for a very long time. And that has never really wavered, so I don't know if we need to go, you know, we don't, I don't think we need pie in the sky. I think we need to keep it, maintain it, and make sure it's affordable for our community.
And if you remember that presentation back um, in in late June, one of the things. Again, they told us you're you're looking at a half a million dollar operating loss, but even at that. They were talking about doubling and tripling the price, which we immediately identified as like, that's not gonna work for us. I can't tell you the countless times I've shared this with many of you, or. You know, families reaching out going, I don't have it, I'm like, we'll figure it out. It's not a big deal. So we wanna keep the the pricing structure that we have now, and so, but again, that pie in the sky sounds great. But then there also comes a conversation, it's like, what do we do with our pricing? That's something that we don't wanna do, um. And so that was kind of that given to you going, let's have this community standard, let's have a quality pool, um, quality opportunities. Well, let's make sure it's reasonable right away, but this big pie in the sky presentation was gonna double. Which is absurd, so that's, we pumped the brakes and kind of started talking about this approach.
Other questions? We comfortable with the resolution to engage?
Yes.
Right, well, we'll do that.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thanks for coming. Before we get into the discussion about the Bicentennial, I just wanna take a minute and try to confirm the date for. Uh, community meeting we wanna have regarding the Princeton Orleans Fund, we have. Fairgrounds, another on Wednesdays and Fridays, and the proceeded future. So you guys can just look at your calendars and tell us what will work best for you and we can. Arrange, give us enough time so that we can promote the event.
And you said other than Wednesdays and Fridays?
Yeah, they said not Wednesday.
Not Wednesday.
Was there one other time, Chris, to, like, one other day or something?
But Mondays?
As I say, we do.
One of our odd.
Yeah, they wanted the odd ones.
What, what about Monday, January twenty-ninth? Tuesday, the thirtieth.
I'm not doing that, but I'm okay with that going forward.
I just wanna give us enough time to get. I don't wanna go shortchanged.
I was gonna say, we have our meeting on the first Monday of February. What about the second one? That gives a lot of time. I don't know what that date is, but. I just feel like that'd get a lot of time, man. I don't know. Cause it's too much time, I don't know.
I don't know, there's too much time. We need to publicize the meeting, make sure that everybody knows. And uh, and then tell them and then remind them again and again, so I don't think that's too far off in five weeks.
I think this is, I think this probably is pretty.
Monday, February twelfth.
Hi.
Evening.
Six thirty.
Six thirty?
Yeah.
I like that.
I guess people find they eat or whatever and then come, yeah.
You left the fairground now? Right, Bryce and Daniel?
Um, so I, listen, after listening to this, this is just so, this is just throwing this out here. Everybody please, but it's not that everybody would have to serve on a committee. But I think it'd be great if we're all on something and everybody's working, you know, in unison for the better and then not one person. Or three people are doing it all. So this is just throwing out some ideas, but after listening to like. What it sounds like our needs are and what our wants are, um, these were some ideas, like a community connection committee. Um, you know, and I'm thinking that would definitely, I I feel like all these need like two commissioners, which I could be included, I'm just didn't put myself there, okay? But this group will include the community and help collaborate for all celebrations by receiving input. To ensure diversity, equity, inclusion, and have a broader representation of our city. Um, communicate events to promotion and marketing and the city commission and staff about events being put on by various groups on their own. So these wouldn't be the city events, like, you know how we talked about in that, those bookends of like May to the. Comstock Christmas that like, you know, anybody wanting to celebrate, maybe churches, maybe whatever groups that. That that communication's happening, well, their celebrations, um, and I just threw it out there, like, this would be like. Including but not limited to like groups like NAACP, LEAD, LA, M Society, Quanis, Aden Rotary. And all the other service groups, schools, churches, you know, like that connection for all of those groups and like, um. Just a thought, I'm just throwing it out there is, cause I heard there was a, you know, a lot of people have expressed, a lot of public have expressed as well, like. We wanna be involved, we wanna have a voice for this group or for this or for that, um, so it's just a thought, um. And then promotion, marketing, obviously definite, we're gonna need, um, that's gonna have to include some city staff, obviously as well. Um, but it would oversee the logo, coming up with the logo. That group would come up with what the logo is, we talked about that, um. All marketing of the bicentennial celebrations, be in charge of a master calendar of events. So that's, you know, like the anything that anybody else is doing, not just our own events, but anything anybody's doing. So there's some master calendar, so people know what's going on, um, brochures, radio, media, promotions, anything like that, um. You know, an events committee, obviously, we're gonna definitely need that, that's gonna definitely take city staff as well, but um. To plan and get volunteers for all city events for the bicentennial celebration. Work with vol- with pro- promotion and marketing to get those events promoted, but also work with that community connection group to get their input and ideas on. The own, our own city events as well. Um, so these are all like. Pieces that are all working together, but at least then, you know, and maybe it's something where, like, I don't know, every, like. Quarterly to start with, and then it's maybe monthly as we get closer to twenty twenty-five, where. On the opposite, I was thinking like, uh, Greg and I were talking, maybe the opposite Monday of strategic. Um, updates, so maybe it's at the pre-meeting, the first pre-meeting of every, you know, couple. Months to start with, not right away every month, but like where we have updates on, you know, that committee and. I don't know who wants to be on what or what you think about this, but this just seemed like these were the three core things that kept coming up from. Listening to what everybody was kind of wanting.
I think we need to start with what is our vision or what's the vision of the community for this bicentennial? Is it a weekend? Is it a week? Is it a year-long thing before we start going into what the committee? Are or should be, because that might change who can or should be or want to be uncertain.
I think we determined that we'd bookend it with like the first Friday of May to the Comstock Christmas tree lighting for like that time period. But like, yeah, nothing was decided, cause I feel like events would have to come up with, if they want it to be a week. If you want, the city wants it to be a once every month or a week longer, but it looks like, yeah.
I I mean, I think a bicentennial celebration is warranted in all that, but. Is it something we should be putting this much time in? That's my view. I don't know that it is. Other communities who have bicentennials, they do it for a weekend or a one-day celebration. Um, do, how much time do we wanna put into this?
I would like to see, um, I I know that Commissioner Gals and Commissioner Bank and I are meeting next week to discuss boards and commissions. Um, and we, I I noticed that the city put out a request for people to join that. I think we should ask the city. Uh, do we have enough people? Like, this is not something we should put all of our time and effort into, right? Um, I I I love this and I I can't wait to do this. I think this is gonna be really cool, but. I do think that we have to see how much the city wants to put into this, as in volunteer.
Outside of this room, who really cares about the Bicentennial? Your residents care about it. And then that can inform us as to how much time they want us to.
Maybe like a survey thinking?
When we put out that we're, we're talking, who wants to, who wants to do this? Who who wants to be a part of this? Like, you know, if it's overwhelming, then we know we gotta do a little bit more, um, and if it's, you know, if we're not getting a lot of. Volunteers and feedback about it, then. You know, it's a weekend or something. I I think we need to, yeah, see what the city wants and how many people are actually gonna be involved in it. It would be fruitless to develop an eight-month program that, you know, three people attend, right? So.
I mean, my initial thought was a week on celebration, start on a Friday. Yep, start on a Friday and the following Sunday. That gives eight, nine days of opportunities, two different weekends. And we don't really need to, you know, during the summer, probably, obviously, just, you know, want some outside things. But I'm not from Adrian. I have lived here for thirty-two years. Oh, there's been some of you in the room, but, um. I don't know. You've lived here, you've lived here. Do you feel that it warrants more than a week long, so?
I think there's a lot of organizations that will do their own thing, outside of what we're doing.
Yep.
Um, and that's simply putting it on a calendar. I'm not sure the community knows about it. I think we have to decide what we as a city want to represent or the length of time that we want to be. Involved or running the show as it be. But I think there's all these other groups who want to have their own.
Yep.
Individual events, et cetera, um, when it comes to the bicentennial, um. And that that's kind of feedback I think we need, um, and in deciding what we wanna do.
Yeah, and maybe that's not even a com- a committee with that community connection, but we just need that feedback, do you know what I mean? Because there have been several that have been here for a long time that lead, whether it be churches or different groups that have already said, we wanna do something for the bicentennial as well. On our own, like, so I do know there's already some saying that. But how do we make sure that gets communicated? And I don't know, I don't know how that looks.
Oh, maybe we look at the month of June next year and we we have the city as the first week, including first Friday. Or whatever, and then we ask the other community organizations who who are interested. Uh huh, you let us know. We, you can't plan anything during these dates, because this is what the city is planning, but you have all the other dates in June. To to plan something.
I think the the week, the two weekends, nine or ten days, I think that's fine. For the record, I did not. But yeah, I, I think that's perfect.
I I do like the year-long approach because there's gonna be some organizations that don't do events in June. Schools aren't in session in June, so if we want, um, you know, our colleges to be involved. That's gonna need to be um, a different bump if they're gonna participate, um. And then if you think of the K twelve, have a short amount of time in June if if they're even in session. Um, so that would, that would be another component.
And maybe just look at September, like.
Bicentennial year, right? It is the year of twenty twenty-five. I I think the things that we aren't in charge of. Us being in charge of an eight-month program is. It's feasible, it's feasible, so.
I like the night date.
I like Dale Gordon said, we're gonna do nine days or something. Then whomever choose to do something else, you can do that at any time you want. But this is the structure we're gonna do.
We can keep that in our community calendar and promote those things on our our social media, website, et cetera. On a community calendar. But I, but, so that being said, I do think we need some people to help kind of. I don't, city staff shouldn't be completely in charge of those things too, so I think we could, you know. Make sure we maintain it, help maintain the calendar and things like that.
I think it's important that city staff.
Oh, yeah, I don't, I don't wanna bombard them with.
Yes, no.
Well, that's like a stuff, stuff that we won't think of too, absolutely.
And I do know some DDA people have expressed, that are on DDA, have expressed some interest in wanting to do stuff either with events or. Promotion, marketing, but I don't wanna make it just focused on downtown, so we just gotta be careful of that, like, it needs to be citywide, not just that focused.
And I'm gonna throw something up and talk about the colonies. Great job for some internship hours for some. Help, you know, we've got two years, part of this.
At Main Street, DDA is getting an return right now, same, that's exactly what they're doing, from one of the colonies.
As if we're doing twenty twenty-five, because. In the housing report that I read that came, uh, it says Adrian founded in eighteen twenty-six, you know, like. Twenty-four, twenty-five or twenty?
Twenty-six, but they bought Atlanta in twenty-five, yeah.
But we have to decide tonight, any of that?
Nothing, just discussion.
Okay.
Right.
No, no, I just. Do we wanna head in certain direction?
I'd like to request, like, the community to come up with ideas for a logo, I. Is there, you know, the schools or the universities, they have graphic design programs and stuff, it'd be great to say. Throw them out and then have people vote somehow.
Well, and one thing that, um, I'd actually discussed a little bit with Greg too is that, um. I saw another community do something similar to this, but where you, you put this though more on like the actual like. Probably elementary kids, just, um, but have them come up with not a logo, the logo would be on it, but have them come up with like a slogan. And maybe like a little picture or whatever, and like, we have three different ones that get voted by the community, like people put in votes or whatever, and those three are the top. And people could come and pre-order, but get signs, like, you know, like the election-type signs for your yard. And we'll say during the month of, if it is whatever month it ends up being, display, like, come, which, pick your favorite logo. And then, I mean, not logo, slogan, and then it would have this logo though for whatever that logo looks like, it was a circle one time, so sorry, that's why I did that. But it would have whatever the logo is on there as well, but then it would just have that child's slogan and they would. Get to see them around town and maybe you do the top three and, you know, I get somebody to give prizes or whatever, but then now they're on a. Sign and people purchase them for the same price that the, just kind of how the trees work, like it pays for the trees when they get Comstock Christmas trees. It would be the same price, they come in, buy a sign, it's the same thing, it wouldn't be like, we're not making any money, but just. So we're not spending money on that, and then you have all these signs around town. With a positive promotion of Aden and the bicentennial. I don't know, what do you think about that? What are your thoughts?
I think that's how Adrian Public School gets involved with the bicentennial. And that's something that the schools would like to, you know, if. And if that's something that the schools would like to, you know, if the the teachers, I don't wanna put more on their plate either.
Right.
But I think that's a a school program, so if the school wants to do that and get the kids involved in that, I would certainly support that, but I think that that's, oh, that's how they get involved with the bicentennial.
Well, for public comment, we have three minutes.
All right. At this time, we will begin public comment. We will start start inside the city chambers first, just to reiterate, there's a three-minute time limit until the record, please state your name and address. When we have exhausted all public comment within the chambers, we will then open it up to our participants.
My name is Dorothy Schmidt, and I live at Port Twenty-Eight Elm Street. I live in a house that I've lived in for fifteen years, and it turned a hundred years old while I was living in. And so it it is a historic, uh, home in its own right. I volunteer for, uh, the society of historical, um, the Historical Society of Illinois County uh, once a week to do tours of the history department. Uh, it takes us back to one-hundred-year anniversary that we feel like we didn't live through or didn't do anything with. But it's a superb, I'm, uh, display. The second hundred years, uh, we're looking at this centennial uh, situation. For cities, it says, at a hundred years, population changes in twenty years. People change. So that the people that lived there twenty years before are not the people who lived there twenty years later. But the structure of a community changes every twenty-five years. And so that has been divided into quadrants. And our mass system has advanced into particle physics that works with quadrants too. Okay, it does most of our utilities today that it didn't do fifty years ago. Our major change was in the nineteen-sixties. So we're looking at forward to a fifty-year quadrant. And 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 we have in the libraries collected fifty years of information of change, of foundations, of boundaries, of arguments, of agreements, and particularly in population changes in our water system and our sewer system. That's my problem.
Uh, our time is up.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And I I'm
Your time is up. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Andrea Bernard, I live in the city of Adrian. I'd like to first thank, say, Happy New Year to all of you. Glad we all made it back safely from where we were during the holidays. But I want to say I'm excited about the bicentennial. And, uh, not in this community, but um, also, I want to invite you all to celebrate the Martin Luther King Dinner. I would challenge all of you to come because we have some people that we need to honor, one of which is Sister Tricia Harding. She has been in our community for only a few years, but her work has gone across the world. So we are celebrating her, and we're also celebrating Ruby Flores. Both of them are going to receive community award. Our special award is going to be Monique Savage, who is going to get the Lifetime Achievement Award. She has been in this community since the sixties. She came here as a graduating person, uh, and she worked at a training school. And she's been very busy working her whole life with the migrants, even going to California and working with migrants and children there. She is a social worker and with a great resume. And so I'm very excited about her being chosen to be a recipient of lifetime. She worked at Adrian College for almost forty years. So we have the obligation, I feel, as a community to celebrate these three people. So I have tickets and I have flyers for you all, those of you that, uh, would like to support having some of our young people there. I need some, uh, donations for the youth to come. Those donations will be for children that are in middle school and also the high school. The college kids will have the colleges to help. My last minute, I think, I wanna talk about bicentennial. It is very important when we celebrated Adrian's Hundred Years, um, Sienna Heights Hundred Years in Adrian. Every group that's part of this community did actually what you were talking about. We all celebrated with them, but we also celebrated by putting our hundred-year, their hundred-years as a logo part of us in every aspect of our, uh, particular one. My time is up.
You can speak.
I'll say some more later. Thank you.
Good evening, eleven eighty-three Glendale Avenue in Adrian. I have tickets too. They're fifty dollars. It's the fifteenth of January. We need to get those reservations in really quick.
This week?
So, yeah, this week. So if you would like to buy tickets, fifty dollars. You can arm wrestle without mentioning. Why is there a ticket? The other, the other thing I want to mention, it's really interesting about the celebration. I think it's a wonderful idea, one of the things that I'm thinking about is what do we want the community to get out of it? What do we want the city? Great opportunity to advertise us and to let people know things that are going on here that they wouldn't necessarily know about. I come to these meetings and I learn things all the time. Other people don't know about that at all, so focusing on that, you know, sort of like, what can we get out of it? Um, the last thing is the volume is still an issue. If you all could speak louder, that'd be great. Thank you.
Reminder, commissioners, we do have a table for the, okay, getting around about three seats left. Hasn't reached out many months ago. Please just tell me.
Hearing no more public comment inside the chambers, we will now open it up to the Zoom participants. Just a reminder to please state your name and address, and you will hear your time when it is expired. Hearing no public comment, may I get a motion to adjourn?
So, support.
All in favor, say aye. We need to adjourn, and we will begin our commission meeting out in the regular chambers. I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for January second, two thousand and twenty-four. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Benke.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller. Absent. Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present, with the exception of Commissioner Miller.
May I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Miller?
So moved. Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Benke.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Uh, motion has been approved by six-zero vote.
May I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved. Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Benke with a second from Commissioner Schwartz. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Benke.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Consent agenda approved by six-zero vote.
It is a very short meeting. Happy New Year. We are moving on to public comment. So at this time, we will begin public comment inside the city chambers. You will see your time on the screen, and for the record, please state your name and address. When we have exhausted all comment inside the chambers, we will then open it up to Zoom participants.
Ashley Cavasas, Frank, City of Adrian resident. I'll keep it short so you can enjoy your short meeting. Um, I just wanted to say a couple of things. I watched the last meeting and I really enjoyed the discussion. There was disagreement, but you guys worked through it and you found some common ground, and that's all the citizens have ever asked for. Um, there's just one thing that I noticed that we were kind of falling back into a little myopic view when we were talking about the ethics and and that kind of thing. We really, like, as as humans, we have to work on, uh, like, a macro scope, stepping back and looking at perception, and how is this gonna look for people that don't know Commissioner Castleberry, that don't know Attorney Burke, that don't know these people personally. There are a lot of people in this city that we just don't know, that don't know us, and don't know you and your integrity, and just have a a historic view of how the city is run and how municipalities are run and how this government runs, um, as a whole. So it was just, um, it was a good discussion. I just, I just hope that as we move forward with a new commission and new blood, and I'm super hopeful with all of the educators and social workers and and this body that we have, that we can do some really good things if we can keep a big spec, big wider perspective and not take things so personally. And that's all. Thank you.
Hi, Judith Rose Hammerly, eleven eighty-three Glendale Avenue in Adrian. I wanted, I I spoke at the, at the earlier meeting about the Martin Luther King Junior Celebration Dinner that's on the fifteenth. And then I have tickets. If anybody wants to buy tickets, that would be lovely. But I forgot to mention that the tickets benefit the scholarship fund through the community foundation. And so, and there's also a speaker who's the mayor of Jackson, who's going to be the speaker for the event too. And, um, if, it would be great for the community to be there, always learn stuff at those. And what I love too is like at the student nights, we find all the good students, all the wonderful things that go on in the community at an event like that too. It's very uplifting. So, thank you. Hope to see you there.
Andrea Bernard, I am a member of the city of Adrian. I'm excited about bicentennial. And I'm gonna keep talking about it until we all get excited like you were the history of Adrian. There was a time that we had diversity. We didn't have to talk about it. We were actually here among each other, working together to build this community. And we did not leave the children behind. That's why it's so important for us to have as many of the young people uh, to be a part of the Martin Luther King Dinner and the other, uh, areas that we have in our community, that we can share information with them, and that they can become better citizens. The more knowledge that you have, the more you participate with others, the more you get to know who they are, and then you become greater because you become more inclusive with them. I hope that our groups will get excited about all the things that you all are talking about. And then, yes, we don't expect you to do it all, but we definitely will be a part of making it happen. I believe in working hard to make it happen. So thank you for the opportunity.
At this time, we will now open up public comment to the Zoom participants. You will see your time on the screen, and for the record, please state your name and address. Hearing no more public comment, are there any commissioner comments?
Just one.
Commissioner Benke.
To to help with, uh, two-way communication, because I know there's oftentimes frustration from, uh, members of the community as they address the, uh, commission and not having the ability to have a two-way conversation. Um, I'm hosting commissioner conversations at the Adrian District Library from one-thirty to two-thirty on Tuesday, January ninth. Hope to see you there.
Commissioner Roberts?
In case, uh, there is anyone new in our audience right now, we just want to announce that we've set a date and time at, uh, for the Crims and Holdings meeting. It's February twelfth. It's a Monday night at six-thirty at the Fairgrounds. So please spread the word for those that are, um, affected by that. There's several other things, uh, but Greg, would you be willing to give us an update, if you have one, about the opening of River View Terrace?
I don't have an exact date for when it will be open. I can report that, uh, the structural repairs have been completed. That's why we opened College Avenue, uh, next to the building. And, uh, it's my expectation, uh, that, uh, they'll complete the cosmetic work that they're doing uh, inside by spring and be ready for re-occupancy about that time.
Great. Um, the other thing is that EBI is, uh, doing a book drive in the month of January, and the books will be donated mainly to Catherine Cobb Shelter and also to the, um, Free Little Libraries. If you have received some books at Christmas that you're already done reading, like I have, you know, put them in a bag and drop them off at Comstock Education Center the month of January. It would be a great thing to do, to go through your bookshelves right now for that.
Just a reminder that our next meeting will be on a, um, well, it's not going to be on the third, uh, Monday because that is a holiday. That is the Martin Luther King Junior, uh, dinner that night, and we will be there. So, um, our meeting is Tuesday, January sixteenth, our next meeting. So just a reminder to everyone on that. May I get a motion to adjourn?
I'm so sorry. I also forgot. The new Adrian resident information, uh, flyers have been created for the year, and Michelle was kind enough to print twenty-five copies for me to bring. So if anyone would like this, it has four pages of great information. You're, um, welcome to come up and grab it for me afterwards.
May I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.